But it's on, will people jump in? Yeah, but all right, we'll call this meeting to order.
I turn the hands to the flag of the United States of America and choose a republic or just a nation under God, in the best way with liberty and justice for all.
Will you take us through, we'll call please?
Mayor Hirsten.
Present.
Councillor Hexton.
Present.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Present.
Councillor Queen.
Present.
Councillor Heim.
Present.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We're gonna shake up the meetings just a little bit here, and I bear with me while I explain what's going on. The last couple of months, we have had several comments coming from you guys. People have emailed me, people have texted me. And what is apparent through a lot of these conversations is that people don't understand, for one, what we do and why we do it. So there's that piece. So I'm gonna try to take an opportunity to start polling some of the comments, some of the suggestions, and maybe prepare you guys in the next meeting with what guides us. And maybe that would help you understand why we're doing what we're doing. And it's not gonna just come from me, I would invite the council, because you could hear me explain something, and I can do just an awful job. And I want somebody else to come through, and the iron sharpens iron kind of thing, where you better explain it than what I can do. So that's the first piece. The second piece is that there has been a lot of comments that, and questions, that they were said, and I didn't allow the council to respond, because this is not the appropriate place to talk about it. So here I am, I'm super supportive of the First Amendment, I just wanna give that to people, even when they attack me, even when they say things about me that maybe aren't true, I don't like to hear, but I'm all about it, I will take what works for me, and I will make changes as I need to, and the rest I gotta leave alone. But this is not the forum for that. But I wanna give you guys the forum, for if you have something that is maybe not allowed here, or maybe not super cool here, but I wanna give you the ability to take it to me, take it to the council in a different way. So here's what I'm proposing, is to start doing a quarterly meeting, that's not a meeting where we're gonna conduct any city business, okay? There will be no votes, nothing like that, but it will be an opportunity for anybody to come. If you have a question, if you have a grievance and angst, whatever, you've got my ears, and I am inviting everybody to come to this. But I gotta lay out some ground rules, because it's not gonna be a fighting match, and it's gonna... I just can't let that happen either, but I want people to be able to feel that they're heard, and if there's something that we gotta do, then I think it's the council's job to take a look at it and do something about it, if something needs to be done. Okay? So, fair's fair? So, thank you, Tony, Tony's been helping me just kinda pull this together, and so I'm a little scattered on it, but I promise you, it will be pulled together by the time this meeting happens. The first one is gonna be March 3rd, and we're gonna hold it here, 6 o'clock. It's not gonna be on the owl, it's not gonna be zoomed. Don't be surprised if there's opportunities for you and the person that you're maybe needing to talk to, split off and go privately into our office, we've got space here, people can go and have a private conversation. It doesn't always have to be a public issue, okay? I think the best issues that are solved are the ones that are done quietly, respectfully, without the public knowledge. Some of this stuff is HR stuff, and it's made it really impossible for me to comment back, because I'm not gonna talk about HR stuff, just like I would expect you wouldn't want your boss to be talking about HR stuff in front of the public, okay? So, understand that, these guys, I have held back on purpose, because it's not the right forum, but then there's some things that they were said, but it's not the appropriate place to go back and forth, okay? Make sense? Any questions? Okay, so here's the first lesson, and we'll call it not even civics 101. It's summary rules for public comment, okay? Because last, I'm sorry, last meeting, I had limited the conversation, I wasn't gonna allow any discussion regarding job performance that employees do. And then I also squashed down anything that was having to do with the mediation with the union, okay? And I had that right to do that, and so I'm gonna explain why, so everybody understands that. Yes, I love freedom of speech, but now I'm trying to find that balance between, okay, this is my duties as a mayor, these rules weren't just invented by me, this is what the rules are, they're set forth by Minnesota... I'm sorry, I had it in here, but I should have highlighted it. I'm going to highlight it for you. Okay, so bear with me, I'm gonna read through this. So, welcome to this meeting of your city council, please take a moment to read our guidelines for public participation in council meetings. So, the agenda, the agenda packet, you'll find at the front table, you guys have the opportunity to peruse through that. I believe that Tony makes it online, you can even request for the city to have that email to you if you would like that beforehand. Am I correct so far, Tony?
Correct.
Okay, if you're interested in that, and you do not have that set up, I want you to please talk with Tony after the meeting, and she will give the layman's terms on how to get it set up for that. That way, you get to see what I get to see, okay? Okay, so the council addresses the items as they appear on the agenda, so we just go down the list, and we hit every one, when I skip one, which I occasionally do, I usually have somebody of the council to say, you skipped one, and then we'll go back and grab that one, but normally you should go through one by one until all items are discussed. Council procedure. The council has adopted rules of procedure for all meetings. The rules are available for public inspection at the entrance to the meeting room. In order to take official action, the council will pass a motion by voice vote. Generally, a simple majority vote of the members present is needed to pass most motions. So we are a five-person council, it takes three, simple majority. I was gonna say something more on that, but I may have to come back to that. Let's see, public participation in meetings. Comments from the public are restricted to the public forum period. City council meetings are the forum for the city council to conduct cities' business. While city council meetings are open to the public pursuant to Minnesota Open Meeting Law, they are not a forum for public expression. Members of the public are not allowed to participate in council discussion and debate without a specific invitation by the presiding officer. I'm the presiding officer, if I want to hear from you, I'm going to call on you, and then you approach the mic, and then I'm gonna ask you to state your name, state your address. If I don't address you and I ignore you, maybe I didn't see you, but maybe I'll motion to you that maybe now is not the right time. So generally, we open it up at the beginning of the meeting to allow you to come up front and say your piece. But anytime other than that, I really don't have to, and it's not because I'm being a jerk, it's because I don't have to, this meeting is about the council conducting city business, okay? Members of the public shall not applaud, engage in conversation, or engage in other behavior through words or actions that they may disrupt the proceedings of the council. During public forum period, you have to sign up prior to speaking and provide a name, address, brief summary of the subject matter they wish to address. The sign-up sheet is available at the meeting entrance. So, we have that. I haven't really enforced it, I maybe could. To, if you wanna speak, you write your name down, city administrator grabs the list, brings it, and you go from there. So I guess I even have room for improvements on this. Once again, you're recognized by the presiding officer before speaking. Comments are limited to, this says three minutes, we give you guys five minutes. Direct the remarks to me, okay? So if you have any comments, you direct it towards me, I will take whatever you wanna say, and then follow the direction of the presiding officer. During the forum period, the public is prohibited from obscene, profane, or threatening language, threatening loud, or boisterous conduct that disrupts the meeting or the security of the public. Members of the public who do not follow the direction of the presiding officer will be warned that further disruptive conduct will result in removal from the meeting. I really hope I don't have to go here. If the conduct continues, the presiding officer may ask the speaker to leave. If the speaker refuses to follow the direction of the presiding officer, the presiding officer may direct the sergeant at arms to remove the speaker through any lawful means. The presiding officer may request the public to appoint a spokesperson when multiple speakers appear to speak on the same topic. I did that, I don't remember when it was, a couple meetings ago, maybe? Place a time limit to defer the public comment period. Alter rules to meet legal requirements for public hearings required by law. Okay? Are there any questions about what I just read off? Is everybody good with that? Okay, so as we go, I've got more topics that I'll just try to bring to you guys and start reading them off so you guys can understand, and I forgot to ask the council, is there anything that you guys wanted to add to this?
So we're calling it a quarterly public forum, right? That's what we're going to?
Yeah, let me back up. So, as far as that meeting on March 3rd, we're gonna try these quarterly. If nobody shows up, I'm gonna stop, okay? I'm not gonna hang out by myself. I'll probably wait like an hour, and if nobody shows up, I go home. And if that continues, then I'm assuming that everybody loves Rice Lake, and everybody agrees with how Rice Lake is gonna be handled, and you have no ideas on how to make us better. Okay, so this'll be your opportunity to bring it to me. As far as our public discussion, I'm still gonna have it, I'm not getting rid of that, but I want grievances to kinda move to this other meeting, that we can handle it a little bit healthier and keep this to city work, city business, okay? Does that make sense? The participation, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments?
It's not like we're not here to listen to you, and we really, we really are, we can, we do, but we have to do it with respect and follow Robert's rules of orders, that those aren't my rules. And it has to be done with decorum.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we will move on, public discussion. This is for any items not listed on the agenda, I'll even open it up for items that are listed on the agenda. Discussion time, I'm gonna give you five minutes. And so, if you'd like to address the council on city business. You give an A.
Thank you.
Say your name and your address.
Okay, Patrick McDonald, resident of 4471 Schultz Road, resident of Rice Lake for 47 years. I've been here a long time, seen a lot of evolutionary change in the city, I'm very proud of it. I'm very proud of the current administration and council that's in power right now. I think they're gonna do a good job, but I do have a suggestion, if possible. The council does like to spend money, and being a business owner, if you're gonna spend money, you gotta generate revenue. And the revenue is not, I don't like property taxes. So there's other forums, I also have a business in Herman Town for 45 years, I've seen Herman Town grow immensely in the 45 years, plus before that when I was there. I think Rice Lake is gonna go down very much the same road as Herman Town is, it's gonna grow, so you're either gonna embrace it, or get rolled over and plowed over by it, and I hope you're gonna embrace it. One of the things I think it's time for the council to do is start looking into implementing a city sales tax. It generates lots of money for the city, does not cost the taxpayers anything. Herman Town is unbelievably good at doing it. I don't know if you know it, they got a new hockey arena, they got a new baseball field, they just got a new bike path, and it did not cost the taxpayers and the residents one dime on their property taxes. So they're very good at this, on how they do it. And I believe the way Rice Lake, with everything that they've got coming in the future, as far as expansion, and I hope it all comes to fruition, everything's gonna happen, and the growth, growth begets more growth. And people don't look at sales tax, they only look at prices of items, that's amazing. You know, like what Herman Town generates in sales tax, if you just see what Rice Lake already does, with QuickTrip and some of the other businesses in here, we can generate a pretty good chunk of change with the sales tax, it doesn't have to be that much. And the people come shopping outside the area, coming into the area, buying and shopping here, will be spending and paying that tax, so the taxpayers don't have to. So I hope that you'll keep it in consideration. I've got quite a bit of experience in Herman Town, in the 45 years I've been there, with some of the things they've done. You know, you have questions, I can help you with those, but I hope you look into it in the future, it's a new year, and I think it's time to start looking at that, if possible, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay.
Well, the council will address that for just briefly, because occasionally we do talk about that as a council, and we actually talked about it rather recently. And so what I understand, and Tony, I'm gonna need your help on this, is that certain businesses, like the gas station, that's like our biggest business in Rice Lake. And tell me, tell the council and the crowd about how we can tax, or what businesses we can implement a sales tax on, and maybe why right now it's not a good idea, but maybe in the future?
Yeah, so there is only certain things that can be taxed. And actually, currently, the state of Minnesota has put a moratorium on any new sales taxes that are popping up, they're kind of working through the process to streamline it. Because right now, you have to go get legislative approval, and then it has to go to your ballot or your residents to vote on it. So they're trying to streamline that process a little bit, and just making sure that if a city is doing a sales tax, they're using those funds appropriately. So, yeah, we've been looking into it a little bit more recently, but there is currently a moratorium on it. And, yeah, there are a lot of things at QuickTrip that they sell that are not taxable, so. But, you know, there are other things out there, that, other businesses that are selling items that would qualify.
Would qualify, okay, so.
I'm sorry, it's not a moratorium for here?
I know for sure it's nothing for this legislative segment, but.
Okay, so, yeah, I was wondering if it was on a kind of an annual, or just for the legislative cycle?
Yeah, I think just that's when they have time to work through that process.
Thank you.
It's no surprise Minnesota does have some complicated and questionable tax codes. It would be a good idea to iron some of those out, keep things a little simpler. It'll take time.
Pat, did you have any follow-up questions to what you just heard?
You can't believe I've looked up this sales tax in Minnesota as compared to Wisconsin. Wisconsin's much simpler, Minnesota complicates everything intentionally. And it is very like a can of worms, and I've been through a lot of it, so I know how it blows, how it plays out, so, yes. I understand that, but it does take years to get it, so I just think it's time to just sort of prime the pump and start to get started for future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll move on to correspondence, we have WLSSD 2024 Waste Water Treatment and Adjustments. There is a letter, Tony, would you summarize?
So every year, for WLSSD, we don't actually pay based on our usage throughout the year, they just kind of estimate what they think we will use for the year, and then at the end of the year is kind of where they balance that out. So for 2024, our approved wastewater charges for, oh, sorry, that's for all of WLSSD, not just for Rice Lake, $29,523,979. So for Rice Lake's portion, we will actually be getting a credit of $6,241, so that'll show up as a $520 per month credit on our 2025 monthly bills.
Thank you, are there any questions from the council for this correspondence?
Is that gonna trend, have we seen that before, I don't recall it.
Yeah, I think this last year was the first year we actually had to pay an additional fee. Normally, we get a credit back every year, so.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have January 6th finance meeting minutes, the February 3rd special council minutes, 27th council minutes. Executed claims from January 28th to February 10th totaling $58,838.20 and Resolution 25-9 authorizing electronic payments. Council, are there any items you wish to have pulled for further discussion? If not, I have just a couple housekeeping items. I don't know if it needs to be pulled necessarily, Tony, or if you can make... Maybe it does need to be pulled, because I'm asking for a correction. The January 27th council meeting minutes, there was a question from the public about my awareness of a meeting, and that's not in here, and I'm asking that that just be added along with my answer.
Do you wanna totally pull it, so I can put that on and bring it back to you?
Yes, yes, absolutely, we can do that. So I will just make that motion to go ahead and pull the January 27th, 2025 council minutes, so I can add, so we can add the appropriate public comment and answer. And I'm waiting for a second.
I'll support.
All those in favor of pulling the January 27th council meeting minutes, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, that's good. And then, the Resolution 25-9 authorizing electronic payments, what was the difference?
The original one that was in there was 2508, which is a number we already used, so I just gotta move it to the next available.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so what we have left is the standing consent agenda. Council, I'm ready to hear a motion.
Take the motion.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. We will move on to the department reports, we have the January 2025 financial reports. Tony, will you summarize, please?
I'm ending January 31st, 2025. In our friends and checking account, we have $2,207,67.55. RBC Investments has $1,606,62.84, for a grand total of combined cash of $3,806,830.39.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Moving on to the building zoning department report.
For the month of January, we had three residential HVAC permits, one residential plumbing, one residential remodel, one residential roof siding windows and/or doors, for a total of six permits issued. The total valuation is $51,245, and then total fees collected were $753.
Any questions from the council? Moving on to public works report, Shane.
For the month of January, starting with the roads department, throughout January, we finally had a few snowstorms, which obviously was nice. It's kind of a nice breakup from some of the monotonous types of things that the guys do on a day-to-day basis when there isn't snow, things get pretty repetitive. All three of the Justins have been busy steaming driveway culverts on Willow Road, near intersection, near the intersection of Rutter Road, to keep water off of the road surface and in the ditch, and flowing downstream. We had an issue that's still ongoing there with some water. After further investigating that issue, we discovered that the water was coming from an overflow on a resident's property from their Artesian well. This is still ongoing, and the issue and severity of the issue, I guess, it fluctuates depending on the temperatures outside, like now it's not too bad. It's when it's normally when it's warming up. So, we don't have any solution, I guess, really to fix it at this moment, until the weather changes and things warm up. It's gonna be a topic that's gonna have to be brought up and discussed, see if there's any types of solutions or remedies to maybe reroute it if possible, or something. Moving on to the park, last week of January, all three of the Justins worked together, cleaning snow and ice from the sidewalks, following the parking lots, removing all the snow from the pond in preparation for the winter frolic. Everything was looking really good there the Friday before the frolic, and then Saturday, we obviously had that next storm, let's say roughly eight inches, maybe a little bit more of snow. And then it was obviously a struggle that Sunday to keep plows on the roads and take care of everything at the park for the winter frolic. But everybody managed to get all of that done for the most part, except for the pond, which was kind of a bummer, because I think a lot of people wanted to skate. Moving on for utilities, as some probably know, we had our first water re-inbreak for 2025, hopefully it'll last. That occurred on the 10th of January on Second Avenue North. Contractor that was involved in the repair was Kunst Excavating. And along with that, the Rice Lake employees worked basically with the traffic control, setting up signs and cones. We provided the new clamp for the fix, which Chendell was the one that performed that after Kunst had excavated and everything was safe to get done, and put that on. We got to try out the new lake plant that we purchased, it worked really well, it's super quiet, too, which is nice for those types of neighborhoods. Kunst had the jackhammer, it was about roughly four feet of frost before they rolled through to get into some of the soccer snow. And luckily, we didn't have to chase the lead very far to find it, so. The water was turned off for roughly four hours and was back on by 5:30, 5:45.
Any questions?
Just to comment on your good job at the park for that, that looked good over there, it was the exception, there's no one that...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
...skating run, but I was there back in the trail home on Friday before the event. And the pond looked really good, you did a good job, so.
The pond.
It was a race, there was a snowy race to hold up the whole effort, but it was still huge, we tied a couple to my... It worked out okay, and good turnout, very nice turnout. Lots of young families, which was great to see, lots of families, grade school, old age, and hungry. Everybody had a good time.
Thank you, Shane. I was counting how many. I was counting how many people. So I started like just a few minutes after the event started. And my first count was about 40 people. And, and I counted three more times after that. The last time I counted, an hour into the event, there were 63 people. And people had already left by that time, so there was actually more people that had showed up than the 63 that I counted. So that was, that was cool. All right, thank you, Shane, for your, for your report. Moving on to the Fire Department Report.
A little bit shorter of a report this month, but January Calls for Service, we had 33, 22 medicals, three litigants, three car accidents with injuries, three structure fires, one carbon monoxide alarm and one gas leak. And then just the general update, it's been a busy start to our new year so far with call volume and stuff. And then wrapping up the end-of-year reporting and preparing other documents for the beginning part of this year. So we've been focused on continuing to onboard our four new, our department members and then continuing progress on our training center building and scheduling our OSHA fit testing, as well as getting our medical license refreshers scheduled. So all in all, things are moving along, and it's been a busy but good start to this year.
Any questions from the council, Mark? All right, thank you, Mark. All right, and next we have the Animal Control Report. Tony, will you summarize?
For January, there was one black and white puppy that was dropped off at Animal Allies by a citizen. I believe they just did the five-day straight hold on it and, I don't know, putting it up for adoption, but were able to find the owner.
Thank you. And then we have Sheriff Report. If anything you want to say to us?
I don't have any numbers for you guys from January, but we are currently working with our data analysts to crush some more numbers. I believe they've been in touch with you guys to kind of get a more comprehensive report moving forward. Like I said, I don't have a report with me today, but certainly should be a more comprehensive report moving forward in the future. In addition to that, I wanted to address you guys. I'm leaving this position shortly. I think this is going to be my last week here, pending a new deputy that's been hired for this position. So you guys will soon have a new representative at the Sheriff's Office. His name's Austin Wick. Great kid, young guy, he's from the Duluth area. I'll be working with him as well as our data, data analyst moving forward to kind of bring him up to speed on what's been going on here and some of his responsibilities moving forward as the Rice Lake Deputy, so.
When you say kid, what's a kid in your terms?
He's like 21, 22 maybe, young guy.
You're a senior?
Yeah. But he'll do great. I did have him, I helped train him for what we have, what's called a limbo phase, which is kind of a glorified ride-along. I brought him with me and for a couple weeks. Good head on his shoulders, very smart. I think he'll do just well, just fine here, so.
And where are you off to?
I'm headed up to the north St. Louis District. I'm going to be accepted a position as a state-funded TZD, Towards Zero Deaths DWI grant car. So that'll be my focus up on the area range.
Good luck. I appreciate you.
Appreciate that. I do appreciate all you guys as well.
You thank for your service to our community. We appreciate you. One question. We had met with Sheriff Ramsey recently, and he spoke about, I want to call it a pilot program where it's, it's kind of a ride-along, but it's more than that. It was like a 10-week comprehensive where you get to experience exactly what what you guys experienced. So I think there was tours through the jail, tours through like different, different things. Do you know any more detail about that?
I do not know a lot of detail about that. What it sounds like to me is that's the version of our Citizens Academy, which is what I think that would be what you're referring to. I don't have any details on that. If that's something that the council would like more information on, I could certainly arrange for learn a little bit more about it and get some data to you guys.
Okay, thank you. We will take that under advisement. I know that there's a sign-up period, and I thought the classes were starting soon, limited number. But it would be open to the public where you could be immersed in the, in the culture of law enforcement and see exactly what you guys do. I thought it was, it was cool. It was Tuesday nights, I believe. Does that sound right, Tuesday nights?
They'll sound right. Can't say for sure, but I, I will agree with you that it's a, it's a great opportunity for people. Anybody who has any kind of interest in seeing kind of what the backend of law enforcement looks like and, and dispatch and the rescue squad and all that kind of stuff. It's a, it's a really good opportunity to learn more about what goes on maybe behind the scenes that you're not seeing, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Carter.
Okay, next we'll go to New Business. Tony, will you take us through 8.1, the Closed Meeting Summary?
To summarize, I think the closed meeting that was held on January 27th, 2025, the meeting was closed pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C to consider selling city, city property at 5028 Rice Lake Road. Present for the meeting was Mayor Savannah Hurstead, council members John Heckstrom, Jamie Heim, Bob Quaid, and Mike Hendrickson, and myself. Councilor Heckstrom made a motion to approve the sale of the property, and Councilor Mike Hendrickson seconded the motion. The motion was carried unanimously.
Thank you. We will move on to 8.2, Acceptance of Rice Lake Sewer Extension. We have first off a Certificate of Substantial Completion. Tony, what would you like to say about this?
Just letting you know that the engineer has signed up and is certifying the project as being substantially complete. There's just a few items to kind of pile up on in the spring, making sure restoration, grass is growing, that type of stuff. And then I believe something with the lift station panels, just making sure that those are all functioning properly. And then he did, John Moi did also submit a notice of acceptability of work. So he is recommending that the project kind of be completed and then the city take over that, that project.
Okay, so how does it look if that punch list is not satisfactory in the springtime? Then what happens?
We, we did still keep the 5% retainage on the contract, so we do have some, some money that we're holding back from that. So give us some leverage to make sure that we get everything closed out properly.
Okay, so we approve this, saying it's substantially completed. We take over the lift station. If there's any repairs or the panel box or whatever.
The lift station panel?
Yes, was that a high-jailer remote or is that?
I believe, Shane, do you know, was it completely fixed?
Yes.
Okay, so I think it was actually, it's been repaired since this letter came through. We'll just check it again and break it in to make sure.
Okay, okay.
And then I was looking to see how long it is. I believe there's a one-year warranty once we accept the project. So even if something else should fail within that year, the contractor is still responsible for fixing that issue.
Okay. Counsel, are there any additional questions? Do we approve both the certificate of substantial completion and the notice of acceptability of work at the same time? Or is that a separate motion?
I think you could just make a motion to accept the project.
All right, counsel, no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Rice Lake Sewer Extension.
I'll make a motion to accept the Rice Lake Sewer Extension.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the Rice Lake Sewer Extension, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Moving on to the 2025 Contractor List. This is something that I've been working on with Shane and Tony. What I wanted was for the public to have the ability and the council to have the ability to see who is on our contractor list. Meaning, when we have something that we need to hire out, what do we call? How do we call? How do we know how, who's giving all the calls? How do we split that up? And so I will summarize as best as I can, and if I say something really wrong, Shane's going to look at me and he's just automatically going to come up to the mic and correct me, okay? As I understand, what Shane will do is if, if we need some kind of whatever repair, he goes to his list and he sees, oh, okay, yep, this, this contractor does road and ditch work. Great. He calls them, they answer the first time around. Great, they, they get a job. Next time it happens, he's going to skip, skip past that one that just had the job and he's going to go to the next one.
Are you speaking for emergencies or planned?
I was thinking emergencies should, is that okay? Okay, thank you for bringing that up. So maybe we'll, we'll address that in a, in a bit. Emergencies, okay, these are unplanned things that are happening. So say the second contractor doesn't respond to Shane, ignores his phone calls, Shane calls three times and they're just not calling back. Well, Shane's going to move on to the next contractor on that list. And so on it goes. Okay, so he's going to do his due diligence to spread the work around and make sure that everybody gets a chance. But if you're not calling Shane back, you missed your opportunity. Also, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that if there is subpar work done from any of these contractors, the city reserves the right to not use you anymore. So just know that these are public dollars and we do expect good quality work. So just because you're on this list, you still got to do good work. If you hear this list, and I'll read out these contractors in a little bit, and say you're like, why aren't you calling this place? Why aren't they on your list? Or maybe you yourself do work and you would like to be considered on this list. You have that opportunity. You're going to work it through Tony, who has been going to work it through Shane, where, you know, you got to be licensed and bonded. You have to give us an idea of what kind of work that you do. Pictures, proof of that you can complete the jobs that we would ask you to do. So there is opportunities for this list to grow, and I would encourage anybody to call us. We've got one in the works right now that is kind of reached out to us and, and we're just going to interview that person and that company and see what they have to, to offer us. So here's the list. We have Kuntz Excavating. They can do water main emergencies and road and ditch work. Our, and I'm sorry, is that maybe why you were raising your eyebrows, Shane? Because road and ditch work isn't technically emergency, is that?
Yeah, it's just the way you were saying it, I guess. Calling and waiting and, you know, some emergency-based stuff, the watering breaks, the first number to call to answer.
It's just going to get it.
Normal plant projects, like construction projects, all usually have, all need two to three contractors go over the job with them. And if they submit a bid, it's good.
Right, right, yes, yes. So that does not, that process does not change. Okay, B Lee Contracting, they can do water main, I'm sorry, they cannot do water main emergencies. They only do road and ditch work. We have Great Lakes Excavating. They can do water main emergencies, and they can also do road and ditch work. And then we have Digger DJ Inc., who can do water main emergencies and road and ditch work. Okay? So then my question to city staff is, have all of these contractors submitted their proof of insurance, their license bonded, all that good stuff?
I don't believe they all have yet. We do have their certificates of insurance on file, so they kind of all expire at different times. We'll have to go through and make sure that we have everything that's necessary.
Okay, do you do that yearly at the beginning? Oh, you said that they expire at different times. So how do you, like, what triggers you to not accidentally call someone who's not?
Me and Robin are communicating.
Yeah.
All right, like Kevin.
Yep, and then we will make sure that we do get the information that we need before we would actually pay the contractor. Because the, the state has checks and balances and we have, or they have to submit stuff to the state before we can pay them.
Per project? Each project they have to submit stuff? Okay, so they need to be aware that it's more than just the city of Rice Lake that they have to work with?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions from the council?
Well, I don't recall seeing Great Lakes Excavating. Are they new to the list or?
No, they've been on there for a few years. I don't know if he's done any projects. I don't think we've just been able to schedule with his timing to get anything done.
Okay, but again, like Shane mentioned, anything that's going to go for bid. And if, if all of them put in a bid, then the rest of it's up to bid. But for, for emergencies, like a rotating, a rotating word. That's a good idea.
Okay, as far as the Digger DJ Inc., did they, with their whole name change, have they submitted the paperwork with their name change?
I believe they've submitted everything, yes.
Okay, the trucks still have the old names, so I'm like, how far does that name change go?
Sure, yeah. As far as that's concerned, I guess that's not anything that we would monitor, like what pieces of equipment they're using. It's just for tax purposes and.
As long as they've got the insurance and under the right name.
Right, and like Shane was saying, I think all four of these get excavator permits from us as well, so they can do work for, on the residential or on the private side of the utilities. That's what I'm thinking. We already have everything that we need, but I couldn't burden that.
All right, are there any further questions or comments? Okay. All right, so we, I just want to make sure, because we'll still have a quorum with three voting members. Because I am planning on naming this. But I want to make sure that the council has the ability to push this forward, even with my name, okay?
Correct, yeah. And just, just so everyone knows, Councilor Heim is joining us remotely, but we didn't have enough advance notice to post it, so she can't vote or do any official business. She's just there to listen and can comment when needed. So that's why we're not counting her in our, our quorum vote there.
Yes, but we still have three, so we have a quorum. Okay, I will entertain a motion for the 2025 Contractor List.
I'll make a motion to approve as well.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I'll be the nay. That is yes. We have our 2025 Contractor List. Next, we'll move on to Human Resources Update. Councilor Heim is, as we said, at home, and Councilor Heim is going to give us a HR update.
Yeah, can you hear me all right? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It, it's come to the attention of Mayor Hurston and myself. We feel we have a little bit of a morale issue with some of our staff. And from comments that both she and I have received, we feel that we can do a better job. So she and I have had several conversations in the past few days just kind of brainstorming, what can we do? And we don't have any great enlightenment at this point. But one thing that we both agree on is that we feel that But one thing that we both agree on is that we feel that we need to be a little more hands on when it comes to HR, that we're a little too distanced. Because we feel that it, it took us too long to pick up on this and that's just not acceptable to either the mayor or me. So we just wanted to give you guys a heads up that we plan on being a little bit more present in the HR sense. And would definitely appreciate any ideas that any of you on council have about team building or things that we can do to help raise morale. We're a work in progress right now. We have nothing set in stone as far as how we're moving forward, other than, as I say, we're going to be a little bit more hands on. So any suggestions you have are welcome and we will periodically give updates as to what it is we're doing to hopefully improve things in the workplace. That's all I have.
Absolutely. All right, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, so we will move to adjournment. Thank you, everybody.